I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is a brief summary of the current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. There's council members, do you have anything to report going on in the community? Yes?
We had a very successful Verdi River Day, the weather cooperated.
Great.
And we had, I think, they told me 2,384 people. It's not a record, but it's a lot of people.
Right.
And then the following week, we had a real successful but wet, wet water project. We got rained on and that's what it's all about. The kids could see where the water came from that day.
Right.
Almost 500 students were there, fourth graders.
Great, from all over the Verdi Valley?
Yeah, except Sedona.
Except Sedona, they have their own. All right, great work, and it was council member Norman also there. And how many years does this make for you too?
Number nine.
Nine years to doing this, thank you very much for your service. City manager?
I'm sorry, mayor and council, it was that police chief, I'm always a little worried about not taking his calls. Worried he was gonna tell us National Night Out is canceled or something. Just a couple of things, one, I'm very proud to announce that our own sergeant, Todd Moore from the police department has been selected as the Arizona homicide investigators association investigator of the year this year, and I'm sure that had a lot to do with the Marisol Gonzalez case, and so that's a nice
That's awesome.
recognition. And the only other thing I have is just to let the council know that 3 o'clock this Friday, we're having the employees picnic at Riverfront Park and certainly encourage all the council members who can make it out there to come on out and interact with the employees. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
All right, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the public to look at the front page of the Verdi Independent tomorrow, it's on there already. There's a real success story on there about Cottonwood working with the police department, working with various other entities to help out the homeless folks and the fellow that people used to call the Parker guy is featured. And it's just nice to see our city partner with other groups to take care of these folks. I think it's a great, I think it's a great story. What's that?
Have a tissue ready, I read it about an hour ago.
It brought tears to your eyes. Yeah, it just says a lot of good things about Cottonwood and our employees and our ability to work with other entities to really show some empathy to people and help them out, so, once again, hurrah for Cottonwood.
Absolutely.
And he, he's not the only one that has come through that program, but I think he's probably the most well-known. I mean, everybody always had a lot of kindness directed towards him because he's really a kind person.
He's a nice guy.
Yeah, a good person. So that's really a great success story, and I want to thank you and your new chief, who I know when you hired him, you directed him to look at this issue and you also knew that he had a lot of experience in it, and he's done a great job along with Mick Jordal, who's our prosecutor, and Mike Shaw, who's our defender, Judge La Sota.
And Darlene.
And Darlene, that's the reason I was bringing that up.
She's featured in the story.
Yeah, and Darlene is, throughout the last couple of years, she would tell me that she was working with him and all the things she was doing to try to help him. And it's just really a tribute to her that everybody was able to pull this off. And thank you for sharing this story with the community, because I know the community was worried. I had a lady call me a few weeks ago asking about him, worried that she hadn't seen him. And was able to tell her a few things, but I didn't tell her much because I didn't know if I was supposed to, but just assured her that he was fine, doing well, and now she can see the whole story.
The whole story.
And he could be standing right next to you and you wouldn't have recognized him anyways.
And I didn't, when I went to court to give him a certificate of completion, I didn't recognize him at first. And, you know, and his name is Jeff, so if anybody sees him on the street, his name is Jeff.
And it's the lead story in the Verdi Independent.
Very, very nice, very nice man.
Great, so I would just like to report, I've been, I've missed a few meetings, I read three sets of minutes with my name in the absentee column, and I drove back to Iowa by myself and drove home by myself, so it was a lot of fun. I got to see my mom, who's in a nursing home, take her for rides around the lake and take her to family get-togethers, so that was all fun. And my sister, she was like cooking all the time, she works full-time, so I told her she was a great example for me that maybe I should get more interested in doing those things too. So, she gave me a few recipes and I came home and Paul thinks he's in hog heaven. He doesn't, he hasn't gotten much attention in the past few years, so, so life is good. Okay, awards. Back over to there. 216 Thunder Valley Rally Ambassador Awards for Diane Jones, Terrence Pratt, and Doug Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council, TBR committee members are gonna make this presentation.
Madam Mayor, council members, this award exemplifies someone who supports and enriches community, economy, and the sanctity of motorcycling. Chosen individuals display these characteristics year-round through their vision and actions. As Ralph Walso Emerson states, "Do not follow where the path may lead, go instead where the path, where there is no path and leave a trail." The 2016 recipients are Doug Bartosz, Diane Jones, and Terrence Pratt.
Okay, do you want us to come down?
Yeah. Oh, Terrence already has it.
Oh, Terrence, second.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you so much. Thank you.
Come up here. Or give that one.
They gave it to me, I didn't even ask.
Yeah, need to bring it to them.
Actually, it's in my truck. My wife told me to put it.
No, they're supposed to.
You can't take a photo without having cameras.
Come on, Richard.
Come on. Come on. Oh, yeah, they have to keep up here. They think they're all the work.
You did.
Yeah. Thank you very much for this, I didn't expect it.
Yeah, my wife told me to put it in the truck.
Can't, can't, that's the photo without you.
I always listen to my wife.
Smart man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate this.
Madam Mayor, if I could just make a quick thanks to the TBR committee. It's, Hes came to me shortly, I think after the council decided to proceed with it and said that, you know, their first-year plan was to, you know, cut the expenses by 20%, and I said, I think you gotta do better than that. And to their credit, they did a fantastic job, they cut $70,000 out of the, out of the cost of the program and brought it in at a price that is just so much lower than it was last year, so. My thanks and congratulations to Hes and the committee.
Thank you, committee.
They really exceeded all expectations and all the feedback I got this year from people who attended was that this was the best organized TBR we've had to date, so, it's a great job.
Thank you, committee, yes, Mr. Pratt?
I have to say this, I said this at our wrap-up meeting after TBR, that, yeah, we had a great committee, people from all different walks of life, but anytime you have a team, you also need one team leader, and again, this person always avoids the spotlight, but Hes, I thought you did a great job of bringing this all together and you really, really did.
And so he should get a plaque.
He's on a pedestal.
Well, we really appreciate your work and we know who's behind the scenes really driving and making things turn out well, so thank you, sincerely. Okay, the next award is a proclamation proclaiming October 16th, 2016 as National Feral Cat Day. And city clerk, Mary Ann Jimenez, would you like to make any comments? Angie Angela's here today and
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, I appreciate the proclamation, I have registered the proclamation with the Alley Cat Allies. It's the national organization that helps other humane societies and cities and towns with the spay-neuter programs and help keep feral cats from being euthanized nationwide. And this year, the National Feral Cat Day is October 16th, 2016, actually, it's that same date every year. And Doug was amazed that it was so soon again this year.
I thought you'd just celebrated this.
And he always gets me about that.
He always has to tease you a little bit, right?
And Angie, right, the humane society manager is here, and the humane society has a program, which is really neat, that the, the feral cats, they, they get them fixed and get their vaccinations done, and then they offer them up as barn cats. And Angie will explain more about the Verdi Valley Humane Society's program for feral cats.
Okay, come on up and help us understand all the great things you're doing for these animals.
Thank you, hi Mayor, hi council.
Hello.
So, in 2016, Verdi Valley Humane Society has spayed and neutered 54 feral cats and 164 stray cats we were able to adopt out. That makes a total of 118 cats that were not fixed and roaming in the community. But this isn't the end of the population, as we know, we receive hundreds of cats a year from various other, the county and, you know, other cities like Camp Verdi and stuff. But the good news is, is that the number has decreased since 2015, so that means that the city's spay-neuter program and our spay-neuter program are really working. Because last year, in 2015, we had 90 ferals, so it's almost dropped half.
Great.
So it's really great news, and I want to thank the city for all the help that they're doing as well.
Good program.
Yeah, so a little bit on our feral cat program, when they're brought into us by the animal control officers or citizens of Cottonwood, we hold the cat for three days to make sure that the owner's not looking for it if it doesn't have ID. And then after the holding period, we take it to our local vets and we have it spayed and neutered and have their shots and rabies vaccines, so we tip the ear. So that way, it's easy for a citizen to recognize, oh, that cat has already been fixed because it has a tipped ear. And then we will release it as a barn cat or out to a local winery. So we really appreciate once again that the help the community and the city has given to help control the population of the feral cats.
Great, what a great place for them to have a good life. Well, thank you so much, so we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas October 16th is National Feral Cat Day, a day dedicated to educating communities about feral cats and trap-neuter return, a humane method of care for outdoor cats. And whereas trap-neuter return improves the lives of cats and stabilizes cat populations, the stresses and behaviors associated with mating such as yowling and fighting stop. Trap-neuter return is recognized throughout the United States and other countries as the humane and responsible way to care for feral cats. Now therefore I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2016 as National Feral Cat Day. In and for the City of Cottonwood and encourage all citizens to support trap-neuter return as a responsible and humane method of care for feral cat populations. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be affixed this fourth day of October, 2016. Mary Ann, do you want to come down and help me hand out this proclamation? So we would like to, I think we would like to give you this proclamation.
Madam Mayor, just another kudo, I think the success, a lot of that success can be attributed to Mary Ann. As much as I've kind of made fun of her about cats and her love for cats, you know, her drive to deal with the feral cat population in the city and the neuter, spay-neuter programs, I think, as we've seen, clearly have made a difference, and that's, that's fantastic, so, thanks to Mary Ann, great job.
And you took the exact words out of my mouth, I was just going to say, in spite of, of the teasing that you get. We really appreciate what you do for these animals and you make their lives better. And I know that you have gone to great personal expense yourself to do this, so we appreciate your dedication and thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there any member from the public who would like to speak today on any topic that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to the next item, Approval of Minutes. Was a great way to catch up on all the things that you all did while I was in Iowa, you were busy. Special Meeting of September 13th, 2016, Work Session of September 13th, 2016, and Regular Meeting of September 20th, 2016. Any comments, did you have a comment?
I was gonna move to
Okay, please.
I was gonna move to
Please, any comments?
Approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Allen made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent Agenda, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items until a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one, Special Event Liquor License Applications for the Walkin' On Main Event scheduled for November 12th, 2016 in Old Town, Arizona Stronghold Vineyards LLC, Burning Tree Cellars, Caduceus Cellars, Cotton Tucky LLC, 48 Wine Works, Gallifant Cellars, Winery 101, Page Spring Cellars and Vineyards, Pierce Wines, Arizona LLC, Pillsbury Wine Company, North and Southwest Wine Center. Okay, so, are there any items that anybody wants to pull off of that consent agenda for special discussion? Any items that the public would like to pull for discussion? If not, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion, Ms. Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New Business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is request to close North Main Street from Pima Street to Cactus Street and the Gateway Parking Lot from 4:00 to 9:00 PM on November 12th, 2016 for the Walkin' On Main Event. Mr. Allen?
Madam Mayor, council, for the most part, this is a pretty rudimentary closure that we do each year for Walkin' On Main. I included kind of a map in your packets, I've got extras if you need some, I've also got extras for the group if you need some. Basically, we're gonna shut the street down, or proposing to shut the street down on Friday, the day of the, or Saturday, the day of the program, at 4:00 AM, basically from the Tavernum Parking Lot down, and corresponding with that would be the Old Town Geo Parking Lot, because car show keeps growing each year. The thought is to have it kind of wrap into that parking lot instead of back behind a little bit. The event hours are 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we put 9:00 PM as the road closure wrap-up, just to give ourselves a little buffer. We try to be done prior to that with the intent of having as minimal impact on Old Town merchants as possible, so, that's pretty much the gist of the closure.
Okay, council members, do you have questions or comments on this item? Mr. Pratt?
I think it's a wonderful event. Can I make a motion?
Well, let's see if anybody from the public wants to comment, anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Yes, Mr. Jurison, if you would come up to the lectern, please.
Eric Jurison, old town business owner. Called Hes today just because the 4 to 9 thing threw me in the paper and, and I couldn't remember some, keeping the road closed that late, so I went and took my, we, you know, we document every day what happens down here. And I guess it was, we didn't really open the road to a little 8-ish or, you know, somewhere there's where it actually opened. And I noticed after Thunder Valley Rally, I felt like, you know, with a little more effort, it could have happened sooner. That's also Art Walk Night, you know, and as we're, as we're doing a better job of the, of the nighttime business down here, it'd be great if there's maybe a little effort to grab an extra, you know, if it closes at 5, 7, 8, you know, 8 is the buffer, but the sooner the better. You know, we're always a little laid back at the end, but it'd be great just to clear it out and get it opened again.
Okay, thank you. So is there any way that that can be accommodated?
Madam Mayor, council, the big challenge is we've, we've got two 40 by 40 tents that all have artists in them, and it just, it comes down to how quickly we can get those artists out. Once the artists are out, Verdi Valley Reynolds is right behind them tearing down the tents, so, like Eric says, we try to exceed that 9:00 PM every year.
So is there any way that you can just notify the applicants for booths about maybe a requirement to pack up and leave as soon as possible or give them a deadline or something? Of course, you work this festival and I have no idea what happens, so I'm just trying to bring the two sides together here.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Same side, just a request.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I just also want to remind the, the public that in conjunction with Walking on Main is the historic home and building tour that day.
Did you want to speak to that at all, Mr. Elinsky?
I would like to make a present, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a presentation to council, maybe perhaps next month about, well, really the end of this month, about the goals of the home tour this year, but it will be taking place in conjunction with Walking on Main, between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00.
So on the eight
9:00 and 4:00 PM, excuse me.
9:00 to 4:00 PM?
9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, that's right.
Do you want to be on the agenda for October 18th or the first meeting in November?
If we can get on for the 18th, that would be great, yeah, that would be great. Really just to tell the council what our goals are for the event this year and set some, some more benchmarks for the event.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the street closure, uh, street closure of North Main Street in Old Town between Pima Street and Cactus Street and the Gateway Parking Lot from 4:00 AM to 9:00 PM on November 12th, 2016 for the Walkin' On Main event.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is review of the 2016 Tilted Earth event. Mr. Allen?
Madam Mayor, council, just like last year, we, each year with Tilted Earth, this is actually the first year where we started a Tilted Earth Committee, which is a great group of local stakeholders, wine entrepreneurs, Eric Lomsky himself, he wanted to extend an apologies, he couldn't be here today because he's down in Wilcox because it's our harvest and crush season. This year, we did a descriptive data analysis or study of the Tilted Earth participants who attended. We did not do the economic impact study, that was something, something that the committee requested that we would do, and then maybe follow it up the following year to do some kind of a trend with that. As with all studies, we'd like to give the parameters, that way you guys understand the data that's being presented to you. Sample population, we took 295 surveys, we had a total population, event population of 1,680 attendants this year, it was down from last year. We're 95% confident that our data is gonna fall between plus or minus 5.18. So basically, if the average and the mean is 50%, it's gonna be 55 plus or minus and some change. Obviously, unit of analysis, the program attendees, and we, it's random sampling is the way we get our surveys. First, Tilted Earth Origins, where people visit from. Largely, what we see is Maricopa County, other Arizona cities, Yippee County and Coconino County, but 23% of the attendees for Tilted Earth this year were actually from the City of Cottonwood, the rest were from out of town. The tilted visitor household income, again, this is combined income before taxes, rarely do people know their income after taxes, unless you own a business. But basically, the largest, and this is 2015 and 2016 is, is the data comparison there. Pretty much the same thing, we saw Pretty much the same thing, we saw the twenty-five to forty-nine, fifty thousand kind of raise up a little bit this year. And then, the fifty to seventy-five came down slightly. But for the most part, they're kind of right in line with where they were last year on the attendees that, and what their combined household income is. Interesting that sixteen percent of the attendees had an income of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars combined. Tilted demographics, and these are the age of the people that are attending. This is very important for the event itself, to understand our marketing demographics, and where we're getting the people coming from, and how to attain those individuals. The largest category that we've seen grow was millennials, eighteen to thirty-three. I think a large part is that because of the brand, type of acts that we had come for twenty sixteen, and where the wine industry is going currently. Those millennials are starting to get more involved, as entry level quality wine price levels start to come down. Other than that, the data's kind of similar to what it was in twenty fifteen. This is kind of the guest performance slash overnight stays. The first one is, overall, how well did the Tilted Earth Festival meet your expectations? Twenty fifteen, we're at a nine, twenty sixteen, we're at an eight point seven, came down slightly. The next one, would you recommend Tilted Earth to your friends and family? And then, that actually came up to ninety-seven point eight. We find that statistic very important, because that goes back to the thought that you can't grow a festival overnight. It takes time, it takes time to build your brand, and it takes investment. The next one, are you staying overnight away from home in northern Arizona, before, during, or after this festival? Sixty-one percent said yes in twenty fifteen, forty-one percent said yes in twenty sixteen, so down slightly. We think that largely has to do with the entertainment. We had the large act on Saturday this year, or the year prior, we had Robert O'Keen on Friday, and followed it up with some solid acts on Saturday, so there was two nights. But this past year, if you look at the entertainment bill, it was really heavy on Saturday. I'll walk you through this, I know there's a lot of numbers up there. We tried to do a twenty sixteen comparison and a twenty fifteen, so you guys can see the two years. So, basically, in twenty sixteen, total sales, which are wine ticket sales, ticket sales, merchandise sales, plus total sponsors of forty-eight-five, came to a total revenue of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, and some change. Twenty sixteen, those program expenditures were a hundred and fifty-two and some change. That year, the event raised approximately twenty-five thou, twenty-four thousand dollars for charities. In twenty fifteen, and total operating income was minus five thousand and some change, does not include staffing. Following up, twenty fifteen, total expenditures was two hundred and eighteen and some change. Total sales was a hundred and forty-four thousand and some change, and raised approximately thirty thousand for charities. So, you can see that we brought the numbers a lot closer together, and that was combination of our staff with our program expertise, and obviously Eric with his business model. So, any questions on that slide? We'll move on. So, now, to the city costs. As we remember, we allocated seventy-two thousand dollars to this program. It was a co-sponsorship agreement with Page Springs Sellers. Prior to twenty fifteen, we gave them a flat twenty thousand dollars, with no anticipated ROI on that investment, cash in, cash out. Although, obviously, we did have some state and local sales tax generations. Our total cost to the city in twenty fifteen was around thirty thousand dollars, when you factor staff time, plus the twenty thousand dollars. Twenty sixteen, fast forward, we spent fifty-eight thousand and some change, and we got back, according to the agreement, fifty-eight thousand dollars and some change. So, we netted out at zero. Plus, we had a approximate state and local sales tax generation of eighteen thousand. Granted, we did do the economic impact study this year, so that number's an approximation of basically attendance and what we did the prior year. And again, that's the agreement expenditures, it doesn't include staffing. Now, when you go down further, outside of the agreement, the city spent nine thousand and some change on staffing, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars on this NAU study. We always get event insurance to ensure our liability and what our costs are, just in case bad weather happens, accident on ice seventeen, something catastrophic. And then, we also purchased the Old Town signs at eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and some change. Total city cost, cash in, cash out, for twenty sixteen was twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars, twenty-one cents. You go on a cost-benefit ratio, we actually netted out positive because of the sales tax that we generated, at five thousand five hundred and one, five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. It's kind of the down and dirty numbers. This is the caption from last year's economic impact study. Can't take that, obviously, too hard, and it's approximation. Obviously, population size was different this year compared to the year prior, but... Is there any questions on that slide?
Any questions from council or members of the public? Yes, Ms. Ilinski? Please.
It was a sixty-four hundred dollars, Madam Mayor, excuse me, there were, we hired an attorney to come up with the contract. It cost about sixty-four hundred dollars, as I recall. I'm just curious, is that in the, in these numbers, or is that in the, we share that cost with the other party to the contract? That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
No, that cost is not in these, are not in these numbers. So, basically, the five thousand and some change, you could add six thousand, so we're in a whole a thousand dollars and some change this year. And then, the follow-up question is, you know, what's the future hold for Tilted Earth? Eric Glomsky's informed us that he's into business of making wine. He's enjoyed his time working with the city to a certain degree. The event world is a whole different monster, and it's very taxing on his crew, and it's not what his crew does. So, staff has kind of tried to work out an agreement with him, but the thoughts are, we take the program over, but as far as the imagery, the branding, how people perceive it, we would still get consulting from Page Springs Sellers. Obviously, the financial contribution on both sides, Page Springs Sellers would drop off. Staff's thought is that we feel that we could do the program between, for between seventy-two and eighty thousand dollars. Obviously, we would have to drop off some program components that were niceties, but at the end of the day, does not, do not really, you know, contribute to the bottom line, so, that's kind of where we're at. Unfortunately, anything on that?
I think the only thing that we wanted to identify was, but, with Eric and his involvement, the one thing that they would probably pull into Page Springs in order for the promotion and marketing for Page Springs would be the dinner program that was held at Blazin' Em, and that was expressly identified by Eric, is that he felt that that way then they would hold everything out there. They could hold up probably close to three hundred people on site, and so, most everything would be there for Friday night. And they, again, we would just do a Friday night, they would, we'd do a Saturday event program. So, our Saturday event program would also include a national act ban. And that's what we would try to do, would be to pull people up from the Phoenix area to really gain a little bit more maximum, as much as we possibly could, by getting a better national act like we did two years ago. And so, we think that that would probably help and assist. Again, what HES was talking about was, you know, cutting away a lot of the VIP areas in the context of that. Would also eliminate the childcare probably as much as we can, so we don't have any extraneous costs going out there. So, we would take a look at a lot of different areas that we need to cut back on. But we do believe that we can do a one-day event. We feel that Page Springs, as well as a lot of the other wineries in the area, would contribute with the booths. They would contribute with, you know, writing a check, then back to the city, and so, that's where we would gain a lot. I think that that was one of our main concerns, as well as with the sponsorships, because a lot of the sponsorships Eric is able to get, and we would not be able to get those sponsorships. His are primarily associated with the wineries and the wine companies, and so, that would actually come into play as well. We would continue to do a lot of our sponsorships with Four Peaks, Hennessy. We'd be doing a lot here locally then as well, and with that brewery. So, those things would continue on. So, we think that that would help out and assist immensely. So, one thing, again, though, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood, is that, you know, we did have an investment of about thirty thousand dollars from two years ago, and even if we did take the eighteen thousand that we lost, it's nowhere near the thirty thousand we did two years ago. And that would include the attorney's cost, and so, so just to let everybody know, just wanted to let that be known. Any questions? I think that's our main field, try to get direction from council, is what would you like us to do?
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think in many ways, this is an important event for Cottonwood. I don't know if everybody's noticed, but Clarkdale is starting to have more and more events, 'cause they're realizing that that's one of the ways to do economic development. There was a recent editorial in the Virginia Independent, talking about events and the economic impact in the area, and that our cities and towns are doing it right, so I'd hate to see us walk away from this. And I think it fits right in with our branding, the heart of Arizona Wine Company. And, you know, we could talk to Eric, and again, he's got the sponsorships. And I think also, we could include the college a little more, because that program is getting much more popular, and it's drawing people to the area. So, I, I just think we have to find, find a way to continue doing this. It just makes a lot of sense to do it.
I have a question, because it wasn't made real clear. On our packet, it shows the estimated economic impact for twenty fifteen was three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And what we put into it was seventy, eighty thousand dollars, is that correct? That's an excellent return on our money. I mean, we're making that benefit to our community. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, but just to remind council that those are the twenty fifteen numbers.
Right, right.
So, obviously, population size is a little bit down this year, so can't take those at face value, but it's approximation.
In a general sense, we're still profiting our citizens immensely with this event.
Right.
Even the city investing seventy thousand dollars. I just wanted to make that clear for the listeners, so that they understood it's not just seventy thousand dollars put out there for nothing, we are getting a return on that money.
We are, you know, with the fewer amounts of people that did overnight stays, as was indicating, we're probably looking, I would say, more closer to three hundred thousand.
And I think it's a learning thing as well, because we did the major, the act on, oh, that's, never mind. Anyway, I have one more question, too. I know I spoke to you about this at one point. Did we charge for the galleries? I know you had some artists displaying artwork and things like that there, were they charged for their space?
That component was kind of handled by Page Springs Sellers. From my understanding, they charged them a percentage, because it's a challenge to get artists. Don't quote me on that, I can find that information out exactly and send it to you.
And the reason I was asking is I had spoken about this before. I know that he was surprised at the turnout of people that wanted to actually participate in that event as artists. And in general, an artist will pay anywhere from two to three hundred dollars for a booth space. And if you were to increase that and charge the two hundred dollars per booth space, you're gonna make, you're gonna make some extra money that way.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Something we can definitely look at. So, I know that one of the things that Mr. Glomsky had indicated, he wished he really could be here. He even indicated he could call in, and we told him, hey, you know, it's all right. He's very concerned about, you know, Cottonwood, he's very concerned about the brand. He wants to continue the program, he would like to see it continue. He just felt that this would help assist him in Page Springs and get more notoriety for Page Springs. We understand that. But he also would like to see us continue then for the one day. So, that's why he was very interested in making sure the brand was secure, and that Tilted Earth would continue on, and he would take a look at it then after this, this year, for the future, I should say, as we move forward for this two thousand and seventeen event. The one thing we are definitely looking at is moving it back, because it is so hot. We really believe that that did impact us. We feel that probably moving it into May, either mid-May or later May, would really help us dynamically, because again, you know, they were identifying heat wave after heat wave for the Phoenix area. People didn't want to come up, people do not want to come up with their vehicles to try to get through the canyon areas and coming up. So, we do know that that would help probably immensely, so, and so, that was another thought that he had expressed as well.
Any other comments or thoughts on the future?
Madam Mayor, you know, another thing that's not included in this chart of costs and revenues is the impact of marketing here. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of marketing that goes on for this event, that also markets Cottonwood. And so, even if people don't come up, they learn about Cottonwood, and learn about the fact that we're a wine destination, which, again, is consistent with our brand. So, you know, just a rough guess, my, I don't know what we spent on marketing, but it was somewhere around, I think, twenty, twenty-five thousand?
Yep, hard dollars is about twenty-two thousand dollars. When you look at the deal that we were able to procure through a marketing company, that the average person wouldn't be able to do, because they're a company located in Phoenix, I think the value is probably around fifty thousand dollars, on the actual advertising that we were able to give to this program.
So, does he have the patent or whatever, copyright on Tilted Earth? So, pretty much no one else in the state's gonna be taking that like rhythm and ribs and...
And that brings up a good point, Madam Mayor. So, in speaking with Eric earlier today, his thought was, let's see how the program goes this year, and then the following year, he would release all branding and trademark rights to the city of Cottonwood. The biggest challenge with starting a program from scratch is that you start from zero. Each year, you learn something new, and you're changing, you perfect the formula. You have an end goal, and you set your visions and your five-year plans, and it takes time of steady growth, and frankly, a lot of investment. And so, the website alone, if we had to recreate that from scratch, would be thousands of dollars. And that's just hard cash, that's not the staff time it would take to develop something like that, and have it be user-friendly and functional.
I think that's the other, you know, kudos to, you know, Eric Glomsky as well, as indicating that he would actually do that. He wanted to at least keep it until this spring, see how things went, but then, he would definitely, if he felt that it was necessary, that's the direction he would move, to turn that over to us.
So, Casey, did you, do you have something to say, or did you wanna vote?
Yeah.
We're not voting.
We're not voting, I wanna say something.
Okay.
You know, the other thing that happens with these events, that people who are involved in economic development, like Mr. Casey Rooney now, you can't count, is that if people come to your town and have a good time, I can't count the number of people I've met in Old Town on a weekend who say they're from the valley, and they've come back here because they had come to an event, they'd come to Thunder Valley Rally and had a great time, and decided, hey, Cottonwood would be a cool place to come back. And again, you can't quantify that, it'd be hard to count it, but that is something to consider, too, that you are marketing the city, and it does bring people up here, not just for that event, but they come back.
Well, even with TBR, I mean, we just received a letter from a woman in Alberta, Canada, who had indicated that, you know, she's coming back for TBR, please give us an update on the dates for next year. I mean, that's all the way from Canada. So, yeah, it definitely does have an impact on our community, and a widespread impact.
Yes.
Casey, do you have anything to add to this at all? And if not, I didn't give you much time to prepare. But I've never known you to be a loss for words, right?
You know, I've been coming to this event for quite a while, and I think it's a great event. I mean, I enjoy it personally, and I know everybody that goes there enjoys it. It's a real peaceful group, they're having a great time, they're staying in the community, they're loving the event. I do like the idea, and I think that came up tonight, of, you know, they had the wine dinner on Thursday, then they had the event on Friday and Saturday.
dinner on Thursday, then they had the event on Friday and Saturday. I would move the wine dinner to Thursday, or to Friday, and just have a one-night event, and I think it would be a huge success, I think we'd make money, and people would be happy with it. I mean, I just know, I was there, and people get off work in Phoenix, and it's hot, and they, you know, they stay at their own home, and then they come up the next day. So Saturday would be a great day for the event. If we're going to go to a one-day event, do the wine dinner on Friday, I mean, this is just my thoughts.
So you would still get people coming up for the wine dinner, just to fill up hotels and that sort of thing?
Wine dinner was a huge success, from what I heard, on Thursday. So wine dinner, Friday, festival, Saturday, and I think that's exactly what you guys were saying, I'm just verifying what they're saying, and I agree with that logic, and I think it's a nice event for Cottonwood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make it clear with council, with all these programs, they are a risk, so like Casey said, you know, we're going to make money. It's always a risk, you always have your revenues and your expenditures, and you hope they meet somewhere in the middle, and it takes time to perfect the formula, so I just want council to be aware of that.
So if you didn't have it two nights, and I agree with the one-day thing, but you wouldn't be filling up your hotels in the area, but, I mean, so other communities could pitch in if they wanted to fill up their hotels?
It's true.
Have you ever, I mean, we talked about this last year, about collaborating throughout the whole Verdi Valley, but that doesn't always work so well. Vice Mayor?
They might fill the hotels on Saturday night, though, because the music in the venue goes on quite late.
Well, yeah, we would fill them up Saturday, but not Friday.
Sometimes I've noticed, like with Rhythm and Ribs, when we got larger, we got less. So if we take this over on a smaller scale, we can always make it larger another time, but if we start smaller and build it, that'd be easier on our staff, and I think it would be very successful.
So as far as our staff, I mean, Eric and his team did a whole lot for this, and do you see the ability to pick up?
There are, the indications for Eric was that they would not, they would not have their volunteers this year, unless those people wanted to volunteer for our program on Saturday. They would be having so much going on also at the winery itself, that they would be needed there, so we would be taking over almost everything again. We do so much already as it is from this, just this past year, is we picked up so much of the actual gate entrance fees and everything else, along with all of that, along with security, things that, you know, that actually was not as good as it was last year from previous year. So again, as Hes was indicating, we're able to increase the, you know, some of the areas where we faltered maybe in 2014, 15, to see things improve by 16. If we needed additional personnel, we can probably get additional volunteers from our end, as well as part-time employees, so we would probably look at that as well. But again, it's a one-day event, so we don't have near as much of an impact on our people, they give a one-time shot deal, and that's pretty much it. So, and they're used to doing that, even with July 4th programming, you know, to Easter egg hunt, to fall carnival, to whatever, so that's just part of our program, and that's what we do. We do it good.
Do. Okay, comments from the public on this item? Do they want to throw in their two cents, three cents, four cents, a nickel? Okay, so what you're looking for is direction from the council on whether to proceed with the event for the coming year?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, we're looking, staff is looking for direction on if you would like us to take this program completely in-house, with the artistic and branding side coming, consulting coming from Page Springs Sellers, and then we would use our already budgeted $72,000, probably between $72,000 and $80,000 to put this program on, with the city having the financial responsibilities.
So, as well as moving it back into May instead of?
Exactly.
Yeah. I think that's great.
I say go forward.
Okay.
Mr. Haldig?
Yeah, it's fine.
So, yes, Mr. Linsky?
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind council that May is Clarkdale's Verdi Valley Wine Music Festival. They hold that in May, isn't that correct? I think it is May, so you might just want to verify that before, because to have two...
Make sure we don't have those...
Just make sure we don't conflict with theirs as well, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good thing not to do.
We'll shoot for the weekend prior.
That's a good point.
Yeah, oftentimes, yeah, we collaborate, or they hold events on our event days, and just kind of meld it in together and maybe get more people that way.
Totally.
Okay, so it sounds like the direction is to go ahead and move forward.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, claims and adjustments?
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Councilmember Norman made the motion, Councilmember Allen seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, I move to adjourn. The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Diane, what time is National Day, I'll start.